Alright, so everyone understood why we pushed the ARPA meeting today to the next time? It's just too many people out, might be for that kind of money being spent. And I cut my goal, at least I thought, as chairman, that we would try to get some decisions made. So let's, we'll try to do it for the 34th, so we have the benefit of an extra week. So, Mike, you're stuck in another meeting.
Well, Jeff, I just want to say this. I think it's better we have a special meeting. This way we don't have to be rushed.
Be rushed, didn't it?
To get to the town council meeting.
Yep.
And hold everybody up.
Yeah, I agree with you.
The right thing to do is the 34th.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea as well. Alright, so we're live?
I think so. We're waiting for him to, we haven't done the fade out yet.
Oh yeah, we have to do the fade out. Okay, here we are. Alright. Call to order, Town North Branford, Town Council Meeting, North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, January 17th at 7:06 PM. We'll start with a salute to the floor, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Michelle, if you'd provide roll call, please.
Mayor.
Present.
Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Counselor Abelson.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni. Counselor Diamond, here. Counselor Gold. Counselor Nate.
Here.
Counselor Paladino.
Here.
And Counselor Colm.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a couple of things on the agenda for previous minutes. We have the December 20, 2022, regular Town Council Meeting. That was tabled. I will accept a motion, should, so desire to do so?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Counselor Diamond.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay. Onto the next, B, January 3, 2003, ARPA Workshop, 5:30 PM.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Diamond.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Yeah, I have a point of order.
Please, sir.
In the minutes, and I could be reading this wrong.
Okay.
But in section two, it says the total granted to North Branford is 932,840.2, and 3,000, 3,253,676 has been used to date. I think those are backwards.
Backwards, yeah, okay.
So I moved, I moved that we correct them and make the total granted.
No, it's not, actually.
Was 4.1 million, and we've expended 932,840, leaving a residual of 3,253,676,07.
Yep.
Okay, so, so moved.
So moved with the correction.
Thank you. Seconded, okay. Thank you, sir.
You can go over the numbers a little bit and then.
Just flip them backwards.
Okay.
So one is the, the 900 is what we spent, the 3 million is what we have left.
Yeah, but the total granted to North Branford was 4.1 million.
4.1 million, total grant, right.
Yeah.
Correct, that's so, the 3 point something left, and then you can make an addenda, secondary, that there's four, there was a total of 4 million, what's the number?
4.1 million was granted.
Right.
Correct. Of which we spent 300, or sorry, 900.
We spent 932,840.2.
932,000, thank you. Correct.
And we have a balance of 3,253,676,07.
Correct. Okay, thank you for that point of order, appreciate that. And we had a second by Deputy Mayor Zampano, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Thank you. Onto item C, January 3, 2023, WPCA and Town Council Meeting, 7 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor, Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Alright, thank you very much. Onto the regular Town Council Meeting. Onto number three, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. We did move this forward, and we're going to keep this in that second meeting going forward, because it's after generally most of the meetings, so we will pick this up again. So, and item A, Economic Development Commission?
Yep, so the Economic Development Commission met on January 9. They had a guest from the Chamber, Dee Jacob. Updates from the Chamber. On December 13, they had the holiday bash at Bill Miller's, which I was unable to attend, but I did see a lot of pictures online. Said it was a great success. There was 120 people registered, and looked like they had at least that. Their annual awards will be coming up February 21. They are looking for some nominations in that for numerous awards, community partner slash hometown hero, and also New Business of the Year. Next big item on that, the destination North Branford website, I guess, is going to be reworked. I guess Roger Solway had started doing it, but they weren't exactly sure of the way it was going, so they're going to meet with the town manager, I guess, and kind of do a.
Right, yeah, Lauren Green, who does the, the local is good effort, she's the one behind that, so yeah.
Yeah, wants to kind of rework that and get that going and post it. And other than that, their next meeting is February 6, 6 o'clock, in the town manager conference room.
Thank you, sir. Okay, onto item B, Parks and Recreation. Typically, that's Counselor Angeloni. I do not believe anyone have a report from that. Alright, we'll get that update in the next one.
The last report was that they need on January 24.
Oh, there we are. Thank you very much. There we are, thank you. Okay, and Police Commission, Counselor Diamond?
Police Commission met on January 9. The chief reported that they have a new dispatcher. They also, North Haven gave, I'm sorry, North Branford gave mutual aid to North Haven during the firefighters funeral. They helped them out. I think that's really nice how much mutual aid goes on among these departments. Deputy Chief Lovelace talked about a program called Internet Crimes Against Children, which is on the Agenda Leader on. It's a task force that already we have some people, some of our police officers participating, but we've been invited to have more. And I think it's, in this day and age of social media, it's definitely something that, you know, we should consider. And I know it's on the Agenda Leader on. The chief also acknowledged Officer Peroli, who led in raising $300 for Connecticut Cancer Foundation through that no shave November. He wanted, I think that was great, they did it, and he wanted to give Officer Peroli recognition. And then there were some other requests for, they usually get those for street signs, limits, speed limit signs, et cetera. That's about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, onto item D, Fire Commission. I do not believe that, does anyone have a council pledges' report on that? That we'll push that to the next meeting. Okay, onto Finance Subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman, any planning and zoning?
Alright, did I mispl, alright, I checked planning and zoning, and I have planning and zoning, okay. Onto item E, Planning and Zoning Commission. Alright, so I attended Planning and Zoning Meeting. During that meeting, they appointed new town planner as the zoning enforcement official, so official that David Perkins is now the zoning enforcement officer. They also talked about the POCD review, a discussion. They went through some review draft revisions, and they're going through all the draft bylaws and some revisions going through each of them. That's been an ongoing process, somewhat of a painstaking process. It's going through all the bylaws. And then, of course, we had the town planner's report. And Town Planner Perkins distributed suggestions on revisions on regulations that exist today, our land use rebuilding timeframes, and non-conforming use in structures. That was pretty much the meeting. Alright, now onto Finance Subcommittee. Mike, do you want to give a synopsis on that?
Oh, sure. Yeah, sure. So, we, we met last, last Monday. There was a few things that we, we discussed, and a few of the results show up on your agenda tonight. One of them is the, going over the, obviously, the financial report, the contingency appropriations. We discussed doing a change in the bid threshold. So the Finance Subcommittee had some discussion relative to the, the need based off of, was brought forward by Park and Rec over a change in, currently by ordinance, we have a $7,500 limit per department for the bid threshold, and $15,000 for Public Works. And this is creating a situation where a number of things that need to be obtained, that are budgeted for, it's, it's hitting up against the threshold. So consensus was reached with the Finance Subcommittee to recommend to the full Town Council changing all of the bid thresholds for all departments, with the exception of Public Works, which it would keep the same. They'd have all departments changed to $10,000. So that's going to show up on your next agenda.
Because it's an ordinance.
Correct, it'd have to be changed in ordinance, you have to schedule the hearing, et cetera, so. So that proposal's going to come forward for you next time.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I can't remember anything else that was there. Off the top of my head, you guys were there though, too, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, right, yeah, the P card, that's on tonight, right, correct. That was one item that was discussed.
That's on the agenda as well. But we used the P card and having several more hit rated.
Right.
Okay.
We also talked about ClearGov, a presentation that we watched, a video.
Correct.
Which, you're compatible with UNICEF, and that may come up tonight, too, as well.
Correct. Yeah, okay. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that. Alright, onto Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
The only thing about that right now is that Motorola's in the process of installing the radios in the police cars.
Okay, thank you. And the CIWWA?
That next meeting is on January 25.
Thank you very much. Okay, item four, Town Managers' Report, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, for general updates. The COTS system, as you know, I was reporting on last time, that was down due to a cyber attack. And again, that's the system our Town Clerk's Office uses for processing land records. And at the time, it was hoped that the system would be back up and running on the 4th, which was the following day after our council meeting, and, and it was, but briefly. Thankfully, Lisa Valenti and her staff and the Town Clerk's Office caught up with the processing of the land records up to that day, as it came down the following day again. However, system finally came back online toward the end of the workday today, and thanks to the efforts of our Town Clerk, we don't have as much to catch up on in processing these things as other towns that use COTS are going to contend with. So, again, we're assured our data is safe following this breach, and it should be up and running. Hopefully, it'll stay that way. The town budget process is officially underway. Town departments will be submitting their proposed department budgets to me and Finance Director Anthony Esposito by close of business Friday, February 17, and we will be conducting our budget meetings with town departments the following week. At your first meeting in February, we will have a proposed schedule for the Town Council to adopt for the council's portion of the budget process. COVID tests, we continue to have COVID rapid home tests available here for residents at Town Hall and at the Stanley T. Williams Community Center front desk. Residents may still get test kits available through the federal government, which will be mailed to them at their home address by visiting covid.gov backslash tests. Public Works Department, in conjunction with various contractors, has completed a successful construction season as part of the town's ongoing road improvements program. This includes 2.1 miles of chip ceiling and 8.75 miles of crack ceiling, including patch pave prep work. Additionally, the Public Works rebuilt catch basins or replaced catch basin tops on approximately 30 catch basins, and removed broken curbs and replaced approximately 3,000 feet of patuminous curb throughout the town. My thanks go to Fran Marola, Dan Celantano, Public Works, and their crews, as well as Victor Benny and the Town Art and Engineer for their efforts in successfully overseeing these important projects. The Town Website, we continue to be on target with our new website development. We have several working meetings coming up this month and February to get us up and running. We remain on target for a springtime launch late in March. CCM and cost, I had the pleasure of attending the Legislative Breakfast for the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities last week at the State Capitol on opening day of the Connecticut General Assembly, as well as Annual Meeting of the Connecticut Council of Small Towns. Our own State Representative, House Minority Leader Vincent Candelora was a featured speaker at CCM and a panelist at cost. There are a number of important issues coming before the legislature of interest to our town, and I'm looking forward to working with our legislative delegation this year to advance our interests. The VITA Program, the IRS Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, offers free help in preparing and filing state and federal income tax returns for those in need. Due to COVID, there will be no onsite preparation of taxes here at the library. All returns will be completed virtually by IRS certified preparers working remotely. The library will help clients with scanning their documents, including last year's income tax return, any forms showing income and potential deductions, which will then be used to prepare tax returns by VITA volunteers working remotely. For more details, you can contact either the Atwater or Smith Library, or visit the library's website. That concludes my general updates.
Thank you, sir. Okay, to Permanent Project Building Committee.
Stanley T. Williams Community Center Roof Replacement Bids were opened on the 14th of December. The bids were reviewed, and the item will likely be before the council at your next meeting. North Branford Police Department, we had a meeting with a contractor scheduled for today, with the Subcommittee Committee, we met 5 o'clock in my conference room, and discussed that, and we have formalized the schedule to commence work February 1. That is set in stone now, or set in the ground, whatever you prefer. So we're going to have a ceremonial groundbreaking scheduled also, so we'll be in touch with you when we've begun to schedule that and set that up to take place.
That's great.
So we're excited, we're finally going to be beginning that project.
That's great.
NBIS, the drawings and specs are being finalized, planning for a January advertisement. And North Branford High School, the mid-February move is still scheduled pending the temporary certificate of occupancy. The Phase 1 punch list items are being accumulated and worked through, and furniture has been delivered and is being placed. This concludes my report on Permanent Project Building Committee.
Thank you, sir. Okay, onto item five, Community Events and Presentations. I do not see any. Onto item six, Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence. Do we have any? Okay, seeing none. Move on to item seven, Rate, Resignations, and Appointments. I do not see any at this time. And item eight, Unfinished Business, Discussion and Action, also, I do not see any at this time. Onto item nine, New Business, Discussion and Action. Item A, Discussion and Action of the Proposed Assistant Town Manager Position. So this is kind of in accordance to what we've been doing amongst our other departments in, you know, finding a way to have succession planning be more prevalent. And this is something that Town Manager Talents has helped put together, some requisition information and some job, kind of job aid. If you'd like, would you mind just walking through?
Absolutely.
A little bit of that?
So tonight, you have before you one of my first proposed structural staffing changes. It's the creation of the position of Assistant Town Manager. The proposal before you creates the new position by merging together our Economic Development Coordinator role, along with providing an in-house human resources element in the form of a full-time Assistant Town Manager. The aim is to accomplish a few important goals. First, provide critical succession planning for the office of Town Manager, where there currently is none. Second, fold the part-time role of Economic Development Director into this new full-time position, which will allow for greater focus on economic development matters as needed. Third, enable human resource functions to be performed by a town administrator, eliminating the need for it to be outsourced to an outside contractor. And fourth, remove the primary responsibility of HR from the CEO, allowing for the CEO to provide an appeal process in HR matters before grievance and litigation. I'm anticipating this post to have a salary roughly $100,000 range, merging the part-time salary of Economic Development Director and costs associated with contracting human resources. The attached financial document that accompanies your packet shows how we could stand this position up ahead of the current fiscal year, of the end of the current fiscal year, using the accounts mentioned, and presuming a start date of April 1. Section C6-2 of the Town Charter authorizes the Town Manager to consolidate or combine offices, positions, or departments under his jurisdiction with approval of the Town Council. This action would be a creation of a new position that consolidates the economic resource into it. Therefore, tonight, I ask the Town Council to authorize the creation of this new Assistant Town Manager position, consolidating economic resources and human resources, economic development, and human resources functions into it.
So I, I know this is something we've talked about for quite some time. This was brought up during our budget meetings last year, and again, goes along with our, kind of our process of succession planning, so that we have backups for when people are out, or someone's leave, and just really to have better coverage all around. This particular position is going to encompass two very necessary needs for the town, one being HR. Right now, we're currently utilizing a pay-for-service that hasn't necessarily lived up to its expectations, unfortunately. So the cost of that particular service is going to kind of offset some of the cost of this particular position creation. And then, in conjunction to that, we also, during this time period, have lost our part-time Economics Development Coordinator, and that cost will also be rolled into this, thus making this a very inexpensive addition to North Branford. And obviously, economic development, I think everyone knows that it's been kind of a pet project, or for me, in my thought process of what North Branford needs to thrive. So to have someone, you know, permanently in Town Hall and putting a great deal of focus on this, I think it's very important. So that said, the purpose of this is discussion and action. I'd like to take action on this tonight. I will open the floor up for discussion. Counselor Abelson.
HR, can you reiterate what we're spending right now for the?
Right now, we're spending about, I think we contract for about $15,000 or so for the budget.
Yeah, 25, I think.
I thought it was 25, yeah.
25, excuse me, yeah, so 25.
Yeah.
And then, the budgeted salary for the Economic Development Coordinator is $32,234.
We'll call it 33.
So it's 60, approximately 65,000. So you said the Assistant Town Manager's approximate is 100?
Yeah, that would be what I would expect to pay for that, to get somebody decent. So there'd be a, you know, there's about a $40,000 gulf, that if we were to stand this up for the next budget process, I would budget for that accordingly. But based on the financials that I put before you that were developed by Anthony, what we have left currently, an unexpended salary through the 30th of June of '23, combined with the savings through not using our HR contractor, we would be able to close that gap and stand it up without having to find additional funding.
And if we got rid of the HR contractor, would there, is there a penalty?
No.
No.
Checked that.
No.
It's a good question, but we checked that. There is, we could exit out of it. We've been with it for a good number of months now, so.
Yeah.
It's 20, is the budget, not 25, I stand corrected?
20, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
53.
But the salary is 100,000.
Yes, sir.
How much is it in addition with benefits, insurances, health plan, and everything else? Are there any additional costs?
Yeah, there'll be additional costs, yeah.
So it's not just 100,000 minus 60,000?
Correct.
It's 100,000 plus, whatever benefits we have to pay.
Absolutely, it's absolutely true. I think, in my opinion, that's just one member of the board. I think it's a, it goes in the direction of what we've been thinking of doing, and it does give us some competitive advantages to be ahead of the curve should something take place. God forbid Town Manager has to take a leave of absence, or, you know, something else takes place. You know, we had a testing ground where we unfortunately had encumbered another very important part of our town administration to take on a very important position. We, we tend to wear lots of hats in this, this town, which is, is good, it's great, we have these very talented people to do that.
Yeah, but in the past, when the Town Manager took an absence, we had somebody cover that, and we compensated that person at that salary.
Correct.
There is coverage in the event that the Town Manager was absent.
We had coverage during the time period where our past Town Manager left. However, it encumbered a very important part of our administration and Town Clerk, which Lisa did an absolutely excellent job, and I'll thank her again on record that she did a wonderful job, and I appreciated what she did. But I know it was a tremendous amount of, of effort, and additional effort for that. Counselor Abelson.
And also with, how do I put this? So with HR, economic, economic development, excuse me, it's been a long weekend. What are the roles, can, besides Assistant Town Manager, what are the roles can the, can the assistant be, or take on, to kind of offset the salary?
Well, I mean, largely, the, the idea here is that, I mean, let's just take economic development, for example, right? So we've been leaning forward, and we've been saying for a long time here in town that we want to, you know, have an added commitment to this area, to, to do better in this area, to, to stand up an operation for economic development that reflects what we need. By having somebody come on in this Assistant Town Manager role with these kind of three aspects to it. One, they can do, you know, the, the project support that I could use them for. They could be understudy to me to learn how to, to do a lot of what is needed in this position, and provide that critical succession planning that we've needed for so long. And, and we've come a long way in providing in other departments, but not here right at the top. So, and we've talked, of course, about the human resources and the importance of having that in-house instead of outside, and not having the, the head of it rest with the CEO, so that there's no appeals beyond the very top already. So that should cut down on litigation costs and costs associated with grievances and things like that. But the economic development portion, you know, we've had somebody part-time in that role, and theoretically, somebody who takes on this role and could be doing these other things, when it comes time, if there's a, a rush of business that would require somebody to dedicate some full-time, maybe it's a week or two, or it stretches out, there's somebody here who can dedicate that level of resources and time and commitment to seeing those projects through and, and shepherding them through. So that's kind of the, the theory behind here. Does it bring us to the point where we're getting a full-time Economic Development Director that stands alone as a department head and is full-time? No. But it moves us closer towards having somebody who can advance those needs than we are now.
I'm just saying, we're just trying to justify the 100,000.
Right.
Right? So between those three things, three departments, HR, which is huge, which we totally need in this, in the, in the town, that would cover a lot of needs. Yeah, I'm not really on the economic development, but, and then it would be an assistant to you for all your projects. So, yeah, I'm, I'm in, you know? So we just have to justify the 100, that's all.
Yeah, I think, how many employees, how many employees do we have in the town, on the town side, approximately?
Full-time, 70.
About 70, full-time?
70, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's huge to have a dedicated, someone who can dedicate experience with HR. I think it'd be very valuable to us, and also lend, lend a, a, a strong hand to economic development, too. I definitely think.
I mean, hypothetically, looking at it from the economic development standpoint, if we have somebody in there who's dedicating almost more of a full-time, as things move on, they're doing successfully, and they're bringing in more businesses in town, and that's bringing in more taxes, and in a sense, it could start cutting down on that 100,000, it could almost start paying for itself. And I would think as the town moves forward, as it gets bigger, more businesses come in, then that could also, with a succession plan like you talked, maybe someday we get to the point where we need a full-time Economic Development Commission, and, and maybe we're to the point where we could afford that, and now we have somebody more in line, would be my thought process on it. So I'm, I'm all for it.
Mike, do you see that person going out into the community, then? Do you see that person going out, talking to businesses and talking to?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would, that would be, that would be critical to it, I would think, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, what I noticed in the job description, evaluates employees. Which employees? Would you would say, I presume, so could be department heads?
I would, yeah, I, I do that, and that's, you know, I think when, when I included that, I was thinking more along the lines of providing feedback on any employees that were tasked to work under them for, you know, project-based.
Oh, okay.
To speak of, of the economic aspect of it and the costs around benefits, the likelihood that we will need someone for one or two of these positions in a full-time position at some point, will end up, we're almost in a way, having what we're going to have, what we're going to have to eventually put together. Clearly, the HR aspect of the, the paid service hasn't worked. It hasn't been fruitful. So if we were to bring on an HR person, seldom do you find a part-time HR person. You'd end up spending near this amount for just the HR portion of this, and then just as much for the aspect of a true economic development.
The motion is not, yeah, but everybody's speaking. Do I like for the motion to come out before I express my viewpoint, or you want?
No, you're, I think this is a discussion, you're welcome to express your opinion.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I was on the Town Council at the time, we first promulgated an Economic Development Coordinator. And one of the major concerns was, what else is this person going to do? You don't want to have somebody come on as an Economic Development Coordinator, they start doing other tasks, doing this and that. So it became very clear to the Town Council members at that time, that the only thing the Economic Development Coordinator would do is just that, okay? So now, as part of a administrative Town Manager, we're going to saddle this person with doing Economic Development Coordinator. In the meantime, they're going to be doing public relations, they're going to be in local negotiations with the unions, they're going to be doing many other things. What do you think is going to happen to the economic development part of? What do you think is going to happen to the economic development part of it? As the person gets burdened with administrative duties, the economic development part gets sideswiped, gets, doesn't get dedicated to, okay? So as much as Mr. Palladino talked about they could do this, they could do that, when that person has timeframes and timelines to get things done, it doesn't get done because the economic development part is gonna be pushed to the back. And also at the December twentieth meeting, I don't know if anybody got this here, these are the administrators in the town of North Branford. Look at what we got. Look, these are just administrative positions, front and back pages of all of your duties. Do we need another administrator with a hundred thousand dollar tab plus benefits? I don't think so. I don't think so.
So would you?
Which is burdening the town with another person, another employee with more benefits, and the economic development coordinator is gonna get pushed aside. I would clearly support, like Roger Salloway, an economic development coordinator in that office, and that's all that they do. That's why Roger was so good, because he didn't have to worry about administrative duties. And I think we would be doing a mistake to the town of North Branford by putting this economic development coordinator with the salary into an assistant town manager. I think it's wrong, and I can't support it because of that. And I'm not convinced, when I read everything that they're gonna do here, if this town, assistant town manager is involved with local negotiations with a union, and they have to have meetings and things, what's gonna happen to the economic development part of it? It's gonna get pushed to the back, the back burner. I can't support it.
I hear where you're coming from. I think it's a matter of properly hiring. So hiring the right candidate that can profitably do the position. So, I mean, we all have, you have a job, I have a job that requires me to do a multitude of things, not just one. And if, you know, right now, we have economic development as a point five oh job, right, it's a half-time job. So you would have to, if building this correctly, I would believe that we would make a good deal of this particular job to be focused around economic development. There's no one that wants it more than me to be focused on. Right now, we have zero focus on it whatsoever. It is very, just hear me out for one second. It is very difficult to find a part-time economic development coordinator, particularly one of Roger's status, that had the background that he did, and put them in that position for the long haul. It is more, it's much more viable to have this type of environment and to have longevity and to continue to build on it. But it's seldom you're gonna find a part-time person that's going to be able to fill that position.
Jeff, you said something important.
Okay.
We haven't tried to find someone yet. Maybe had you come back here saying, we put it out to bid, we did this, we put it, we advertised it, and nobody's applying, then maybe I can be convinced, say, okay, I don't want the town to go without something. But we haven't done that yet.
How many positions did you, how many candidates came when we picked up Roger? Do you know?
No, I don't know how many candidates came. I really don't. I don't know if anybody, I don't even know.
I believe it was two, and it was out for quite some time.
Well, I don't know how many came. But the bottom line is, we haven't even tried to promote it to see if anybody wants to do it and get the right person to do it. We're gonna saddle it in another position with another administrator, with all of these administrators and the overlapping of administrators. I mean, they're gonna be tripping over themselves, we have so many of them.
What's your suggestion on the, let's put aside the economic development, what's your thoughts on HR?
Hire a part-time, hire a part-time assistant town manager for HR, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want this town to get pushed back on the burner with the economic development position. I'm very passionate about that. I was passionate about it back then, too. And I want the town to grow, but I want somebody who's gonna be dedicated to just that position.
I hear where you're coming from, I do. I think it's a valid concern that you, if you hire wrong, someone may not be able to put the attention on it that it need, that this town drastically needs. I hear where you're coming from, I do. I do feel that real-world challenges are that it's difficult to find part-time people. I mean, this, we're in a very difficult timeframe to get even anyone hired in general, let alone part-time. Now you're looking for two dedicated part-time positions of very integral parts of town management.
But Roger Salloway was able to get out to the community, go to Honeywell, go to this one. This person's gonna have to go out to all of the community, plus be saddled with the HR and negotiations and all of this other stuff. I just don't think it's going to work at this point in time. Especially since we haven't tried to see if we can fill the position, before you came back to the town council and said, look, we got no other choice. You know what? When Mike came before to fill the town planner with the guy from Litchfield, I was against it, okay? However, what Mike said that night, I said, well, we need, I really didn't like the guy's resume and everything else, but I wasn't gonna speak against it because Mike said something, he convinced me to switch my mind and vote the other way. Well, when he came up with David Perkins and I read his resume, I said, I could support this guy a hundred percent, okay? I think the guy from Litchfield would have been the wrong mix, but the bottom line is, he decided to pull out of it at the end. All I'm saying is, if we've tried to fill those positions, why can't we try to find a part-time economic development coordinator and see if it works? If it doesn't work, Jeff, then come back and say, Mace, we can't find anybody, we gotta do this here, then I can support it. I can't support something we haven't tried to correct the situation, just to say, okay, let's give out a hundred thousand plus thirty-five thousand dollars in benefits to somebody so we can save on HR sixty thousand dollars. In the meantime, we have another employee that we have to worry, another administrator we have to worry about. And as you well know, it wasn't mentioned at the finance subcommittee, what do the administrators want to do, Jeff? They want to meet with us.
Of course.
Because what do they want? They want raises and benefits, okay? So we're gonna have another person to that list. I can't buy into it now, Jeff, I'm sorry.
So what about succession planning aspect of what we've been putting around with every other position?
I can't agree with what?
What about the succession planning aspect that we've put together with every other department?
Okay. Did Mike Paulus have a succession pin?
No, but that's, we're fixing that now.
Okay.
And Mike Paulus is the perfect example. We were kind of left having to encumber him.
Let's say you hired a assistant town manager to do something. He did nothing. We gave him the opportunity to do it.
But Mike, so let's use that for another example. When Mike went away, and, you know, Mike did a great job, and we miss him, and we hope he's doing very well. But when he went away to Africa and was gone for several weeks, we had a very important part of our finance department have to pick up the slack, which has a lot, wears a lot of hats in this town, and is utterly proficient, but it's taxing.
Let me ask you this. So let's say that Mike Towns has to go away to Africa or to some place for a month or something.
Not planning on it, by the way.
Okay, good. Someplace.
So let me ask you this.
Disney World.
So now that assistant town manager has to fill his shoes for however long he goes away. So now all of a sudden, that assistant town manager becomes a town manager, and what happens to the economic development part of it? That gets put to the back burner again.
I get it. There's, I know there's not a
I can't be convinced at this point in time.
Perfect solution, we only have so many people.
And I don't know if the rest of the council members know if I'm making any sense or not, but I'm very passionate because this town has to grow. And I just think with that position saddled onto the assistant town manager, it's not going to grow. I don't think, because we're not gonna be here to see what's going on like Roger did. Because the only thing Roger did was try and grow this town, and we need somebody to do that again.
Right, I mean, I think, I think you're making a good point. I do understand exactly what you're saying because, you know, we're trying to fill, we'd like to fill a full-time position with, break it up into two parts, you know, from two part-time jobs that are both extremely valuable. I mean, HR is a very important function when we have seventy-plus employees, and so is economic development because we're trying to, you know, build the town up with industry and commercial and so forth. It's a, it's a fine line, it's absolutely a fine line. And somehow, if we were to do it, we'd have to find, we'd have to be certain that there's a way to manage it, manage where, you know, the time, because it can't, it couldn't be HR all week and no economic development, or HR all month and no economic, because then we've gotten nowhere. I agree. So it would be, it would be a very difficult and delicate management, I believe. I, you know, but at the same time, how do we get two part-time employees when we, it's so, it's so difficult to get, to get that quality employee.
Tom, I don't
So it's very difficult, you know, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just.
But what I don't get is why we haven't tried to do something first, to come back and say, hey, Plan A doesn't work, we gotta go to Plan B, Vince, and this is it. And I say, okay, at least I was satisfied that we made an attempt to do something about. And HR, stop and think about it, the economic development coordinator is to grow the town, bring businesses in, okay? And HR is to take care of the seven employees.
Yeah.
If we don't do anything with HR right now, okay, and we focus on the economic development coordinator, we're not gonna be harmed, okay? If we get somebody for that part-time position, then we can worry about the assistant town manager where fits in, okay? I don't know, maybe you got all of these administrators here, take some of the duties away from them if they're overburdened, and put it onto the assistant town manager. I just don't believe, and I can't be convinced, that an assistant town manager could do all of these things and then grow the town at the same time.
But do you realize if we got two part-time, let's make believe we got two part-time, a part-time HR and a part-time economic development committee member versus a full-time, they do both, which one's gonna give you more paper in that?
I, you know what? I don't know, because I think the administrative part of, the administrative part of that town, assistant town manager is gonna be more demanding, and the more pressure on that, the economic part is gonna be put to the side, that's all I'm saying.
Honestly, I think it comes down to the person that we hired.
They need an HR person.
Yeah, that's very, and how they're managed.
I think we had a lot of things happen here where we should have had somebody in HR. I think it was unfortunate that Mike, we as a town council wanted a person, it was Mike that decided to go with the company to do it. And I think there are a lot of missing pieces right now in HR that we need. And the other thing about economic development, let's remember, we also have an economic development commission with some very good people on there who I think work hard. It isn't as if this person is gonna be alone
Correct.
or doing economic development.
That's correct. That's a valid point. That's a valid point, Counselor Dymon. There's no doubt, they have a committee, a team, to help them keep on track as well. HR, in my opinion, is easily, easy to forget until you need it, and then they're needed right away.
Didn't we need it?
Yeah, we needed it a couple of good times.
Didn't we need it a couple of times?
Yes.
And that we lost out on?
Well, that's why we're in this conversation because of sensitive issues.
Right, I, listen, I believe HR is more, economic development is extremely important in this town, can't be wrong. But I believe HR is more important than the economic development, because we do have a committee, we don't have an HR. We really don't.
Right. I don't think it's a critical rule, you know, critical role, and I appreciate what Counselor Mesa's saying with this, but I would, I would point out that it doesn't add any administrators to this because you're removing one and adding one. So numerically, it doesn't really add anybody additionally. The reason I'm proposing this isn't because I'm trying to put economic development on the back burner. In fact, it's because I want to advance it and move it forward from where we were. I mean, it's, the reason we haven't moved to fill this position is because I don't think that the way we have it structured works well. And that's why I want to make this change.
And I'm not saying that the economic development coordinator is gonna get put on the back burner, or that's the intent of it, but I'm just saying that once the administrative duties become cumbersome, not going to work.
I would, I'd ask, you know, our town attorney has part of a lot of other town administrations, and if you wouldn't mind sharing with us, some of other towns that you've worked with or work with, their typical cadence on this, and if they have a combined role, or how they go about economic development?
Yeah, some towns will have a, depends on the size of the community.
Of course.
And, you know, some will have a full-time economic development office with staff and one or two other people in addition to the director. And their tasks could be beyond economic development, the grant fields as well, and the grant writing and getting grants. Others will use, one other community, a smaller community that uses an outside person for economic development that they share, if you will, with a neighboring community, that has its pluses and its minuses, you know, whose horse you're riding at any one time. So that's something else you have to consider.
Yeah.
And how you can allocate that person's time. So, you know, you could have one person do the multiple functions and see how that job develops and grows. And you may decide that this person is doing a great job, economic development, needs more time, so maybe transition them into a full-time economic development person, and then, you know, kind of grow with the position, I think.
Brian brings up a good point. Roger Salloway was writing for grants and stuff. Is this your assistant town manager gonna be writing for grants for the economic thing, plus doing all the other tasks, negotiations with the different unions and stuff? I just think it's just gonna be overwhelming, and that person's gonna focus on, because the person's gonna be working right under Mike. The person's gonna be saying, I gotta worry about, I gotta get this done, this, and this, and Mike could give me this task, Mike could give me that task. And then they're gonna just forget about the economic part.
I hope Mike would manage them the right way.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would completely counter my goals, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's okay, but I, you know, we've discussed this, I believe that it's your goal to have this be a significant focus on economic development. That is revenue for town, that's what's gonna build our town and thrive. So I suggest, town attorney?
You have a professional, too, you know, this is something a town manager would probably know best, and this is his administration. He knows the needs, and now that he's settled in here, and, you know, he should, he needs guidance to that respect, I think. He knows what positions and what time is required. You're not a big community.
Correct.
This is a small town, so, you know, if you need a full-time HR person, probably not, you know, and, 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 he knows that, now having done this a while, what resources his office needs to, what all he'll have, unless you have a second person as a town manager, what they will each be doing. I'm sure there's overlap of, you know, economic development with the town manager doing this portion of that as well, these are the daily activities and interaction.
So when we were interviewing for a town manager, we had three candidates. We had, we had this girl, you don't know, you don't know where I'm going with this. Her qualifications, what her role was, she did multiple tasks.
She was essentially assistant, correct?
Yes, but she did multiple tasks. And I believe that she, she got them done. But I'm just saying, there are people out there.
But she was the assistant to the assistant to the assistant, when she got it done.
Yeah, but she still, I believe she still did her job. I mean, but we have the right, we have the right gentleman in the position, and I believe that if we put it out there and you went out to hire, I don't think you would bring somebody in front of us that isn't qualified to do economic development and also HR and also the job. Yes, it's a daunting task, but I don't think, I don't think you're gonna bring somebody to the table that's not qualified.
Right, thank you, Counselor.
I mean, do you envision, you know, from an HR standpoint, where you would step in at certain times because this person might be engaged in other activities or?
In all likelihood. I mean, you know, I wouldn't want to overstate how I envision this role, participating in like, say, union negotiations. I mean, that's my role. You know, they might understudy it or be, you know, a party to it, but that's not gonna be their primary function. And plus, those union negotiations only happen periodically during contract periods. So, you know, my, my view of this is to facilitate a greater focus on those things that are important. HR, just like the mayor said, you know, it's one of those things that you overlook and you don't need it until you need it. And then when you need it, it needs to be executed correctly. So to Counselor Abelson's point, of course, that's, that's my point in finding someone who fits this role correctly. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, for want of finding that magic candidate, I'm not gonna bring somebody substandard before you for approval.
You know, Roger was classified part-time, but how many hours do you think he actually put in that office? Because every time I came into this building, he was in there. He got paid part-time, but
Yeah, I understand that.
I say that his hours were probably more than his hours.
Sure, that's true of a lot of people. I mean, people who are qualified full-time here spend more hours than their full-time hours.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. Roger did definitely put extra time in. We would hope that, you know, it's hard, it's hard to find those people, is what I'm trying to say, in a part-time position. You'd have to find the right person that was, had a background, was retired likely, that wanted to get back into, you know, it's, it's not an easy HR task, could you have to find? Yeah, I know we haven't tried, I don't, what I would try to say is, I don't know if it's necessarily, sometimes, you know, running a race, that's not worth running. Right, it's not a race, that's not worth running, right? It's not, if you know that it's not gonna be something that's out there, you spend your time with the violent.
I will run the race even though it's not worth running, I'll run it.
All right, that's, that's fair.
But I think at the same time, you know, we have, Mike's the professional, he's, he's making a recommendation to us, and I think we have to, I think it's important to support him.
Yeah, I mean, I would, is there any other discussion? Does anyone else want to bring something else up before we move forward? Mr. Mace, would you like to add anything?
No, I'll wait for a motion.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
All right.
I would like to make a motion to approve the position of Assistant Town Manager with a potential start date of April 1st, 2023.
Second.
All right, we have a motion at the table. Councilor Diamond, we have a second by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Is there any discussion?
Roll call vote.
I can certainly do that, I think that's, that's perfectly fine. Okay, any other discussion?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I think I said, I'll add this thing.
Okay, that's fair.
Because you understand.
I, I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate where you're coming from. I have a, I really do care about economic developments, I think it's something that's of the utmost importance, but I think, in my opinion, I trust in Mike's decision-making, that this is probably the best bet to get someone to really focus on it, and, and to push us forward. I, I do believe you have, that is your motivation here, not just HR, but really for economic development being a large part of this. Okay, so that being said, I will, I will honor the wishes of Councilor Mace, and I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Villanueva.
Uh, yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Yes.
Councilor Abelson?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Mace?
No.
Councilor Paulina?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that passes, thank you. All right, thank you all for providing your thoughts and discussion on that last topic. Okay, Item B, review and approval of MOU regarding CT, Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Mike?
Right, as Councilor Diamond mentioned earlier, this, this came up at the regularly scheduled January 9th meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners.
Yes.
They approved this MOU for the ICAC, which is Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. The task force comprises federal, state, and local law enforcement who investigate associated complaints, and the task force leadership has identified our North Branford Police Department personnel with training in computer crimes.
Very important.
And investigators as an asset to the task force. So the agreement allows to send more officers for free training, free equipment, and software to pursue these crimes. There's no cost to us for joining this task force, but a great deal of potential benefits. It's been reviewed by our legal counsel, and given their blessing in the police department, and I are seeking your authorization for me to sign this agreement on behalf of the town.
Yeah, I, so I will add my two cents to this. I think this is of the utmost importance. I think it's a, it's a no-brainer. This is what keeps me up at night, being a father and an uncle, internet, and it's all sorts of different, you know, social media situations before us. So I will subtly put my support towards this, I think this is a very important.
And it's a credit to us that North Branford has been chosen, and has a lot of departments to be involved in this.
We have a, a very, a very good police department, so we should be very proud of what they're doing. Yeah, I think this is a, a pretty simple thought process. Is there any other discussion?
Does this need to be voted on?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't put a motion forward, but you could just make a motion to authorize me to sign it.
Yeah, just a motion to carry the MOU.
I make a motion that we approve the MOU. I make a motion that we, that we approve the MOU that the town manager signed.
Okay, okay, motion by Councilor Diamond, second by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? All right, thank you. I think that's, that's fantastic. And I appreciate the officers that'll be taking that training and their time into that. Okay, Item C, a fire commission request to update merit service retirement plan?
Now, we've got the same, I don't know if you wanted to mention that, but.
Yeah, Anthony, would you mind? Thank you.
As, as you're aware, the town has three defined benefit pension plans, fire plan, town employee plan, and police plan. They haven't been reviewed by attorneys that specialize in pension language, legislative changes, things like that, in many years. In 2011, there was an attempt to review them, it kind of got sidetracked and derailed, and none of the recommendations were put into place. There's a couple of situations that have popped up on the fire department's side as it relates to folks that have been in active duty, and as far as their relation to the pension plan, and it's silent, the current plan is silent to that. And there's been some federal work to get those kind of benefits extended. So I think the, the fire commission is focusing on the merit service plan, but my recommendation would be that we broaden it to all three plans.
Yeah.
And have them reviewed by attorneys that specialize. There was a name that was put forward, I did talk to Attorney Leclerc about it, and, because obviously, as the gatekeeper, the town attorney's office calls the shots.
Correct.
So, the name that they put forward may not be the one that Brian would like to use. So, I did discuss with Brian, I'm not sure of the cost, quite honestly, each plan, it wouldn't be town dollars, it'd be out of the pension plans.
Sure.
The bill that came in, they would separate it out by the three plans. But I think it's something that's, that's needed. Again, there's always legislative changes that we don't catch up with, and rather than being caught with something that we're doing that it's either a violation of the law.
Yeah.
Or just not, not sound, it's best to have them reviewed by an outside counsel.
And Anthony, again, that was 2011 that we had this review, and then we negated any change from that?
Yeah, there was, well, quick story. There was, we hired a firm to look at the pension plans, and what had happened in the case of one of the plans, I won't say which one, they kind of went outside that scope and started to make some substantive changes that people realized were not negotiated changes.
Sure.
And they said, we're not gonna do this at all.
Yeah.
Because this guy went outside what he was supposed to be looking at.
Okay.
And that kind of derailed that whole process, like I said, so.
Okay.
But prior to that, I think it was in 2000, they were reviewed last time. So, in 2009, I think on the police plan, but they're, they're due.
So, industry stand, coming from this industry, and that's what I do on a regular basis, it's, it's typical three to five years that you do something like this. We're well due for this right now?
Certainly.
I would say that it's something that we, we voted support for, because it is something that should be reviewed at least every five years or so.
And I would defer to the town attorney, as far as the attorney of his choice, that he's, you know, familiar with and works with.
Agreed.
To review all those three plans.
Absolutely.
There's no motion before you, I guess, just.
Do, do we, yeah, how would you like to word that motion?
I would say.
Because we want to use a three, not just fire commission, we'd like to.
All three defined benefit pension plans. I would authorize Town Attorney's Office to engage a law firm that specializes in pension review and litigation and regulatory issues, for the purpose of bringing the three defined benefit plans up to the most current legislative standards.
Yep.
And the cost to be borne by each pension plan.
Regulatory and legislative standards.
Yep.
Okay, so as.
I make a motion.
As said, as stipulated by Mr. Esposito, okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Zampano, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Thank you, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, Anthony. Okay, confirmation of beneficial accounts, solar farm at 275-279, so from what I understand, we have to limit to 17, am I correct in the number, 17 accounts?
That's right, that is right, Mr. Mayor. So, I apologize, this has to come back before you, but what wasn't clear in my last communications with United Illuminating was that, as it's an agricultural account, you can spread it out, but there's a limit to 17 accounts across both of the locations. So we have 24 UI accounts, so we would have to narrow it down to.
The lucky 17.
The lucky 17.
All right, how does one know about? We want to hit the high watermark and don't leave anything on the table.
What my recommendation is, is that you just authorize us to do the 17 highest accounts.
I think that makes sense, to make sure that we hit the high watermark, we don't leave anything on the table. So I would, I would suggest a, someone provide a motion, accept a motion for, as stipulated by Town Manager, to allow for he to pick the 17 highest accounts?
So, I'll, second.
Okay, motion by Deputy Mayor Zampano, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to Item E, discussion and action of North Branford Homeowner Tax Program. Is David coming up to talk to us on that?
Sure, but I'll just give a, a quick once-over on this. So the last time, this was before the town council, you had requested that we bring you a proposed update to the, this tax relief ordinance. I met with our Finance Director and Treasurer, Anthony Esposito, Tax Assister, Dave Ambrose, and our town attorneys, Rich Paturla and Brian Leclerc, to review the ordinance outlined in Section 213, and we arrived at this recommendation, which is before you tonight. Essentially, we asked to change 213D-9D, changing the qualified income thresholds from $42,000 to $50,000 for individuals, and from $52,500 to $61,000 for joint filers. And changing 213-10 to create a gradual increase in the $300 credit to $400 effective this July, $500 in July of 2025, and $600 in July of 2027. So these changes are provided in the red docket, red line document that was sent to you accompanying this, and the scale on the memorandum that I provided before you demonstrates what the revenue loss would be, according to those who currently qualify for the program in town, and what the additional loss would be at each part of the steps. And then, I did want to note that there is a cap in ordinance of $100,000. So if we were to ever hit that, it prorates the $100,000 benefit across everyone who qualifies at a lower level, for everybody at an equal lower level. So, in this, at each step of the three scales that we proposed, we're not proposing a change in the $100,000, because we're under the cap with each step. We come a little, little close at $11,000 for, you know, the third phase in, is probably a little closer than we would like, but it remains under it, and so it wouldn't have a, a budgetary impact on paper anyway, because we budget for this every year.
So this is a home run. This is a way to help out citizens in town without having a budgetary impact. It's, again, a no-brainer. It helps out the folks that, that can use this the most, and I think I would be willing to accept a motion to have this take place.
Can I make a motion?
I'm sorry, I would just know, I'm sorry, the, when you do the motion, just, you need to set the time and the date for the public hearing for it, because it would be an ordinance change.
It's an ordinance, correct.
Correct, so I would, and I would suggest that you just do it like you commonly do at the beginning of, or in the middle of, your next town's council meeting, which is February 7th.
Okay, why don't we do it, yeah, why don't we do it after, we don't have reports and committees next meeting, so why don't we do it after accepting of the meeting of the minutes?
You just have to set the time, so you.
And we'll set it for.
Standardly, we've done it like setting it at 7:30, so usually you break in, you already sit from the middle of the meeting.
Break similar, yeah, okay, we'll do that, set it for 7:30. Okay, Councilor, please?
I make a motion to refer proposed amendments to Section 213-9D and Section 213-10 of the North Branford Town Code to a public hearing, and to authorize publication in accordance with Section 4-6 of the North Branford Town Charter to a public hearing on February 3rd?
7th.
7th, at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Okay, we have most, a motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's wonderful, and I think, Mike, that's something we certainly want to get out to the public and make sure they're aware of. I think it's a wonderful thing for the town.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to Item F, discussion and action of expansion of P-card users. So this is something that we talked about in Finance Subcommittee, and Michael has brought up briefly, Anthony's gonna talk about this as well. The current, the current process that we have in place is antiquated. We have one or two cards that get tossed around, and there's, it doesn't really, to me, make a lot of sense to have it this way. We should have certain department heads with these cards, so they can, they don't have to go to Anthony, and particularly people if they're not in the town hall. So Anthony, by all means.
You hit the nail on the head. This goes back, we started with the P-card in town around 2013, and the council was very specific at that time, based on some past history from the 70s and 80s, where kind of credit cards got abused. And it was just, three cards were authorized, one for the Finance Department, one for the Public Works Department, and one for purchasing to have. As Jeff also mentioned, my numbers are given out, folks in Recreation will use the card that's in here, Library, Police. The thought is to make it more efficient, to give them more accounting, kick them up their self, their own cards, and having to rely on one card. If my card gets compromised, which has happened several times, everybody has to change all their numbers and stuff, so it's better to have, so the Finance Committee basically thought for the outside buildings, such as the Library, Recreation Department, Police Department, and the manager himself, to authorize them additional cards. Councilor Zampano, Deputy Mayor Zampano talked about the, the limits and transaction limits. What I looked at was what Franz got on his, and it's five per day, 25 per month, and a limit of $7,500.
Yeah.
So there is, they'll all be uniform to that standard. Myself and Michael Fumiani are the administrators for the program, so if someone ever did come across their limit where they were getting close to it, they could contact us and work with the manager and get that limit raised, if there was an emergency purchase. I know what happened with Recreation this past year, they had a huge delivery of mulch that they needed quickly, and we put it on the credit card, and it was a significant amount of money, would have, would have bumped up against this limit if not exceeded it greatly. So that, that's the proposal, is to expand it to the, it has to be to a particular person, so Police Chief, Library Director, Recreation, and Town Manager, for the, at the parameters I referenced, like at five per day, 25 per cycle, which is a month, and a credit limit of $7,500.
Okay, that, thank you very much for putting that together, we appreciate that. It, it just makes sense, coming, you know, in, from a corporate environment myself and Deputy Mayor Zampano, most of us have a corporate card, and this kind of way of the world now.
It's so much, the convenience factor, like we get a notice, okay, they're having a GFOA luncheon, you go on, you put it on the credit card.
Correct.
You're buying things, a monitor breaks at the PD, you go on Amazon, put it on the card, and it's here the next day. So there's, it expedites the whole process, versus having to wait and do checks and everything else.
Absolutely. Plus, it's much more trackable, so there's more transparency versus who's borrowing whose car, where the car is, it doesn't make much sense, so.
And as part of the overall state P-card program, we get a rebate at the end of the year.
Yes.
And the, the beauty of the, being part of the state program, is your percentage of rebate is predicated on the entire population that uses the state program. So we may only use, say, $100,000 of, of transactions, but the aggregate uses $10 million. Our percentage of rebate is based on the aggregate number.
That's great.
So we get a larger piece of a rebate at the end of the year, so it works out well.
Okay, good. Are there any, first I'll accept a motion.
Okay.
Say, got it?
May hereby resolve that the North Branford Town Council instructs a Treasurer or Finance Director to work with JP Morgan Chase and obtain P-cards for the Police Chief, Library Director, Recreation Director, and Town Manager as soon as possible, with the parameters referenced abroad.
Okay, motion. Motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Please.
So, they'd be, so each person that gets the card, they would be responsible to reconcile it every month, right? Who would be the first approval on that? Like, who would approve it?
It follows the path of a regular invoice. So once the departments kick it over and turn it into an invoice, it comes to myself and the manager to, to sign off on as the, like any other invoice in town. We get, nothing gets cut without Mike and my signature, my, it's a digital now, it's not in person anymore.
So.
CEO, CFO, potential.
In, in the P-card program, is it, is it an online program? For instance, do you reconcile the card online, and then I, I hit submit, and it goes to someone to approve it within the organization, is my question.
Yeah, we're, we're still, quite honestly, working out the whole P-card relation under the Munis world. We've just, working with them as, recently as past Friday, to get the process squared away. It's, it's quite an elaborate process on, on the Munis part of the world. So I couldn't give you a definite answer, but there is, there is an online, everything's online now, so all the approvals are done digitally.
Munis and P-card are kind of in, you're.
Yes, there's an export out of the P-card program into Munis with all the transactions. The individual department or card user would have to go in and say, okay, this is vendor XYZ, this is the account I want charged. Once they completed that, it gets kicked over to like an invoice, and then it comes down for Mike and me to approve, as any other invoice does.
Right, so. Right, so, right, so the reason why I'm asking is because if there isn't good checks and balances in, it's very, it's, it can be misused.
Sure.
And that's, and the more cards you have out there, you know, people misuse them by accident.
Sure.
And that's why you have those checks and balances.
Of course.
You know, and it's really, I can't stress how important it is because we, you know, where I'm, where I work, there, we have lots of checks and balances, and once in a while something, something happens, you know? Or if you apply it to the wrong account, or you didn't put enough information, it gets kicked back to you and says, okay, hey, Tom, you need more information. I don't know why you bought that. You know, put a reason. You know, I'm just, that's why I'm asking.
Right.
You know, to have the right set of standards in place so that everything's straightforward.
Well, as we're talking now, what we could do is, take the Library Director as an example. She could have one of the people in her staff create the reconciliation, charge it directly, and then have Lawrence sign off on it as another set of eyes.
Right, and that's, that's, I heard who you're going to issue them to, I'm thinking, because that's kind of what we do.
Right.
You know, some of the VPs and the Directors have P Cards, but in many cases, you'll find that the, it's usually, if you're responsible for a location, say you're a plant manager, you may not have the card, but someone right below you has it.
Right.
And then you're approved in there, because that's all on your B and L.
Right. And in the case of Public Works, I know Jerry, the Secretary, does a lot of the bookkeeping, and then Fran would bless it at that point.
Yeah.
Police Chief, it could either be Denise, or Jim could do it, and Kevin would sign off on it. So, we could institute some different layers, additional appropriations.
Because that way, if something's wrong, you catch it immediately, and you can correct it before things get, go astray.
Just make that part of the motion.
Yeah.
Do you have a limit? I, I know it's $7,500, no, that's a purchase limit. In other words, if I wanted to go and spend $2,000 on something, I could just go do it. Can you do a limit?
I don't believe there's an individual item limit.
Excuse me?
I don't believe there's an individual item limit.
So, shouldn't you put an individual item limit on there before spending them?
Well, there's...
I mean, if I'm going to go spend $2,500 on a P, on the P Card, shouldn't I get it approved first before I go buy it? Kind of?
How's it, how's it work now? Because remember, they're using these now. They're just sharing the card amongst a bunch of people.
I know, but now you're spreading it out and...
Right. It's more trackable this way. So, right now, it doesn't make sense that you have one card and it's floating around, and we don't know who's using it.
But, oops, I just...
Well, to go to Counselor Alveson's point, yeah, if, so now, if Jesse wants to load a mulch, does she get it blessed by the manager before she does it, or if she needs the mulch, she needs the mulch? Right now, I think she needs the mulch, she needs the mulch.
Right, but it's $2,500 for the mulch.
Right.
Shouldn't it be blessed before she...
Well, it comes underneath her budget.
Comes under her budget, and it would be, the bidding threshold would be in place as well. So, if it, the bid threshold, which we're going to be talking about later, but if she needs to have quotes for anything under that bidding threshold, that would still be in play. So, assuming she did the whole, that whole internal bidding process, purchasing process.
So, I think, I understand what you're saying, but usually in the P Card level, there's a level of responsibility that goes along with it. That's why your name is on that card.
Right, correct.
And you're held accountable.
We talked about that in...
You're held accountable, you're held accountable up to including in termination if something goes wrong. I mean, it, you know, that's financial.
That's true.
So, and it's also supposed to expedite, you know, I think, so...
Counselor Ray?
So, yeah.
Yes.
The credit limit is $7,500. So, when the credit card statement comes in every month, the town pays off the entire balance every month?
Every month, in full.
I just was wondering if there was ever time, somebody was to buy something, and the card gets declined because it's over $7,500.
We've had people decline because they've exceeded the number of per-month transactions.
Okay, all right.
We've had, you know, cards declined, number of months, number of per-day. Sometimes in the heat of the Potato Festival, there's a lot of transactions, they were buying things for all different departments, all different aspects of it. We bumped up against that limit several times. So, then it requires going and saying, okay, bump it up from five to 10 per day or something like that. But it does, it has happened where it's gotten declined, and right away, it's like, what happened? And then the credit limit is an issue typically, or the number of transactions.
Tom, is that part of the motion, Tom?
I'm going to adjust the motion.
Something to that effect.
Something to that effect. It's articulate. Okay.
Okay, how about to add to that motion, Michelle, to include levels of approval by department heads before final approval, the town manager.
And by the Finance Director.
And Finance Director.
Okay, I like that.
Something, something like that.
To add an additional level of approval.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Second.
All right. So, motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Sampaio. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Wonderful, thank you. Okay. On to item G, Financial Report as of December 31st, 2022. Mr. S. Vito?
Financial report, glad to say, remains unremarkable. Property taxes, again, continue to be slightly ahead of last year, 63.6%. Overall revenue appears to be down, but again, it's state aid factored in now with the money that comes back and replaces our lost revenue for the automobile taxes. Doesn't come in all in one shot, obviously, the state keeps the money. On the expense side of the House, we're halfway through the year. We're at 50.2% spent, which is right on target. The same culprits as all along, the mayor and council, predicated by the higher audit charge, the property insurance, predicated by some new vehicles that have bumped up our auto insurance, and the elderly housing shows over because of the sewer use fee. We didn't anticipate it going to the $500 level. We didn't budget that, we budgeted, I think, $480. Aside from that, there's no other significant items to talk about. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to...
I'm going to add just one quick thing, if Mike, if you wouldn't mind, just give a quick explanation. Some folks in town, and I know this is quasi to what we're talking about now, but you talked about taxpaying, received an auxiliary bill, per se, with a blue card in it because of the mill rate change. Would you mind just quickly making a mention to that? I think it might be some confusion as to what that was.
So, what happened was the tax bills that went out for supplemental property tax, for your supplemental car tax, went out using the town's mill rate and did not figure into it the cap that the state legislature approved for local mill rates for motor vehicles. So, what happened, when everyone got that new, they got a white one first, and then they got a yellow one after the fact, for most people, this is a difference of like, you know, a few dollars, right? It's like four, five, six bucks.
Very small.
Unless you have a, you know, unless you have a Mercedes, I'm not pointing at anybody here. But it might be a little bit more, it might be $9. But essentially, it reflects the difference in the card, and it was just an explanatory note that the difference is going to be carried forward. Instead of sending everybody $4 rebate checks on it, we're just going to carry that forward and apply it to your balance going forward.
Yes, thank you. So, for those of us who have already paid, you don't have to pay again. I actually called, even as mayor, and asked Mike this very question, so, because I got, I said, I already paid this bill.
Right. I did the same thing, I paid it already, and then, you know, I got, I got that after the fact, and unless you read that card that comes in there, you might think you're getting billed again for something you already paid for, but you just have to read that.
Push forward on to your next bill to credit it, X amount, unless, of course, you have Mercedes, Maserati, or whatever other car that's $9 or so. So, thank you for that, but I just wanted to make sure we had an explanation on that in that area, because I know a couple of folks had asked me. Okay, on to item H, Continency Appropriations, 2022, 2023.
As Counselor Mace had mentioned at the Finance Meeting, there was a demonstration of a product called ClearGov. Manager and I, and Anita, the staff accountant, have reviewed this prior. There are several towns around us using this, Bramford, Guilford, Woodbridge, and the like. And the demonstration they showed was night and day. Right now, we do a PDF of our budget, it's a static document, it goes on the website, you can pick it up, you can scroll through the 185 pages and, you know, have a good time. With this now is a live document, you can go in and you could say, okay, let's see what the Town Council spent on their budget for the last 10 years. You can plug it in, and it tracks separate items. It's a live document, it gives a lot more information, a lot more transparency. It definitely will improve our overall image we put forward on behalf of the town for the budget process. Again, right now, we're using a static PDF, this is more of a live document. The total cost to do this for a year, you see on the second page, is about $26,400. What we've opted to do for this current year, we don't have the time to get the entire process in place for the budget process. You will receive those lovely notebooks you guys get every year with the 300 pages and flipping through, making changes and stuff. Going forward, if we implement the entire solution starting next year, it would all be done on your computers, on your tablets. So, for this year, to institute this as of February 1st, there is a one-time fee. They broke that fee, you look at the top third of the page, see the total fee is $4,680. He's willing to break that up into two pieces. A piece will pay now $1,800, and the second piece, we pay July 1, again, the New Year's budget. They implement just the budget book, the online version, the cost is $3,029.17, so the total is $5,030 roughly. That's your contingency appropriation. So, I would say, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee and based on the overall image, it's going to improve the town's budgeting process, I recommend that we do this contingency appropriation for the digital budget book.
Resolved that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate $5,030 from reserve of contingency for account. I'm not going to read that forever, 1,000 below the thousand zeros.
Yeah, lots of zeros. All right. We have a motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Sampaio. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I met with Anthony before the meeting, and as usual, he had the right answers to the questions about this reserve contingency fund and what we're spending here, so I thank you, Anthony, for addressing the issue.
Anytime.
And this will, going forward, be more, yeah, I mean, the public will be able to view this in an active type.
Live document.
Yeah.
It's a live document.
Slowly but surely climbing our way into the 90s and maybe even the 2000s.
It's night and day, yeah, night and day.
No more green books. God, I'm going to miss those.
Well, you still got to print a book because, you know, your libraries and folks who don't have computer access, you know.
But not the multitude that we have left over, which we can use for kindling. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, we had discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? That passes, thank you very much. On to capital asset policy, please.
As I mentioned to the Finance Committee a few months back, I want to go through some of these policies that need to be updated. First one I want to tackle is the capital asset policy. Right now, we're recording all assets over $1,000 and counting them as assets and depreciating them, which in this day and age, that doesn't really eliminate the whole thing you're basically doing. So, I've contacted other, contracted other towns, and through the GFOA listserv, I got some information on how other towns are doing it. Some do a flat $5,000, some do a flat $10,000. I did speak to our auditors, and she recommends the process that I have in place here, where it's graduated for smaller items, machinery and equipment's a $5,000 threshold, for improvements to buildings, whether it's roofs, things like that, parking lots, $20,000, and any large-scale assets would be $100,000. So, this policy talks about the disposal of assets as referenced in the Town Charter. The manager has to approve any disposal of assets, and it also updates our useful lives. Right now, we had some crazy lives, I think we had buildings that like 99 years or something like that. So, it brings the buildings to 50 years, improvements, so on, guardrail sign, fencing, office equipment, five years. One of the items that we're kind of lacking in our financial records, the fixed assets we're showing on the books, a lot of those are items that are long gone, that we never take off our fixed asset records because they fall under the threshold initially, and they remain on there for forever, it seems. So, this will go a long way, as, again, as we're moving everything from the old world into the Munis world, that's why I have it retroactive back to July 1, so that eliminates a lot of the garbage we don't have to bring forward into the new world.
Things that are arbitrarily put in there and just kind of left on?
Left on forever.
Absolutely, so it's...
Calculators from 1987 that I doubt we have, you know, I think along that line. Calculators from 1973.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Motion?
Thank you.
Be hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council adopts the town of North Bramford capital asset policies presented by the Treasurer or Finance Director and introduced to the Finance Committee on January 10th, 2023, retroactive to July 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Sampaio. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
So, you're no longer writing off the $1,000?
You're, no, we'll be going by this new category. So, I think $5,000 for certain items, $20,000 for certain items, $100,000 for larger items.
So, you can't take those $1,000 items and add them up? Like, there's five of them and...
No, 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 no.
Depreciate them?
Yes, because they can break one at a time.
That's true.
They're all individual assets, so the two could last forever, three could break, you don't do it that way.
Because it almost builds like an algorithm where you essentially have, you have X amount within a classroom, or say, and you know there's going to be so many tables, so many chairs, so it's standardized a value, and then from there, otherwise, you're never going to figure out, there's only six rulers versus 10, there's 12 chairs versus 15. It just standardizes, it's impossible to keep that level of minutia.
Is there an upside, downside on this?
Is there an up, the upside is it creates more accurate records.
Yeah.
Again, our fixed asset numbers on our books are nowhere near accurate. It cleans a lot of the old assets that no longer exist anymore. The downside, there's no really downside. The downside is that, the upside's also going to be, it's going to eliminate a lot of work as we bring things over from the old world to the new world. There really is no downside at all, to be honest with you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay. Thank you very much. On to item J, Lease Purchase Agreement with TD Equipment Finance for Tower 1.
Correct. As you recall, you folks graciously approved the purchase of the new Tower 1, out of cost of roughly $1.6 million. $600,000 was put down with the $1 million balance to be financed over five years, beginning in the next fiscal year. We did get some pricing through the vendor at a rate of 4.21. I was able to contact TD Bank, who we use for a majority of our lease purchases, and they came back with a rate of 4.05. So, this is the final step in the process of the tower truck, as far as the Town Council is concerned, getting into this. It does reference in here, it's based on the review and approval of the Town Attorney's Office. I did receive from the Town Attorney's Office a letter basically saying that they have reviewed it and blessed it. Once you guys bless it on your end, they'll put it on their letterhead and submit it to me, so I can include it in the package to send to TD Bank, TD Equipment Finance, sorry.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we follow the motion on page 89 as presented.
Oh, you really did give up on it, you, okay, we're using, we're using, okay, does anyone want to read that motion out?
No.
Okay, all right, can we, we accept page 89 as a motion? As stipulated on page 89 of the notes?
Yes, as long as clear from the record.
Okay. Okay, then we will go with that. And you have it there as well, no?
Yeah, I have it typed out.
Okay, good, okay, so we'll have that in the meetings, and if anyone wants to read that long motion, you're more than welcome to do so. Okay, all right.
Second, discuss opposed.
Yep.
I second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Ape, opposed? Stained?
Stained.
Stained?
I had to, I wasn't here to approve that. I wasn't here to approve the, the Tower One.
Must you stand for that?
That, that's not necessary.
Why? I mean, I wasn't here to approve the Tower One.
But that's been approved by the Spies, so now it's the financing of the equipment.
Okay, then I approve.
Okay. Okay. All right. Let's get on, on to item K, tax refunds.
Motion to approve.
Okay, yes, a motion to approve. All right, seconded, okay. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay, on to item I, I'm sorry, item L, 2022, 2023 through 2027, 2028, CIP.
Mr. Mayor, I call your attention in your, in your scanned documents to page 100 and page 101. Those are the only two pages that I want to focus on tonight, the, for those on the council, relatively new. The CIP is a five-year document, the only year that really matters and counts is the current year, the other three or four years out, five years out are planning purposes only. The plan changes annually, what's on there this year may not be on next year as situations change in these departments. So on page 100 in your tablet, it says in budget book on the top, and that's the current year 22, 23 plan, as you folks adopted it back in the April, May timeframe when the budget got adopted. If you swing the next page over to page 101 in your book, you'll see there's four items that have changed from that point to today. Item one is the additional appropriation for the bonding that you authorized for the police department.